Order the Board of County Commissioners, it's September 22nd, we're meeting by Zoom. Eric, you want to say that pledge allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving right along. Public comment, this is a time and the public can comment on any non-agenda item. Lasting for three minutes. Would anybody like to speak?
I would like to be recognized by the chair, please.
You are recognized.
Thank you. Is it possible to share my screen? I wanted to show a document.
I believe it is.
Okay, I'll try and do that then. Here we go. Okay.
It hasn't come up on board anyway.
An executive summary of deaths in Kansas that I've pulled and you'll see the sources on the various causes of death from the flu here and from COVID-19. These are pulled directly from Kansas State Department of Health records. And you do note that the flu season runs from September 1st to August 31st, so it just closed. We're now in the 2021 year. And then deaths from COVID-19 are on a calendar year, which of course, the calendar year is not yet completed. But I also wanted to show in this executive summary, cluster deaths. And I'm going to show the tables these came from. You'll notice that for camp, college, university, daycare, school, or sports, which I have termed youth activities, there are literally zero deaths in the entire calendar year of 2020 from COVID-19 in Kansas. And then if you see the cases, there have been 1,097. This is through the 16th of the month, of this month. So as I go through, this is the first table that I pulled the flu-related deaths from. You'll see right where my cursor is, the 1,539 deaths from the flu, 1920 flu season. So that's where I got that number. And you'll see, we just started the 2021 flu season. And then as you roll through to the next page, this is from the Kansas. Sorry, my screen's freezing just a bit. If I can get it to move. There we go. You can see the Kansas COVID-19, this is straight from their website. You see the 596 statewide deaths. And this is through, you can see the date there, it's small, sorry for the screen size. And then lastly, you get, this is also from the state website, the cluster summary. I apologize again for the font size here, but you'll see it says bar, restaurant, camp, college, or university, and it'll list clusters, cases, hospitalizations, and deaths. So all of my data is pulled directly from, from the Kansas State Department of Health records that any of us could log on to right now. So I want to bring you back to this executive summary. When you look to these things in that perspective, and you ask yourself, the measures were, you know, and I realize this is new disease and you guys are doing your best to respond to it. Now that we've got this data that's starting to really clearly emerge, when do we adjust is the question? When do we adjust and say that we've got literally, at this point, about a third of the deaths from COVID-19 in Kansas statewide, to the total deaths from the flu for statewide? And so we wouldn't respond to the flu with these kinds of measures. Why are we responding to COVID-19? The other thing I would like to point out, another chart here. This shows the pattern of death by age. And this is four countries, South Korea, Spain, China, and Italy. You'll notice the young have virtually no death rate. The death rate doesn't even get past 0.4% until people are 50 years or older. And then, of course, as people at their 60s, 70s, and 80s, that's when they're at most risk. This bears a very striking resemblance to deaths from the flu. You see here, this is a Kansas chart. The deaths on this left side are those same 0 to 50 age. And then once you're hitting 75 and up, that's when people are dying. And so what this would suggest is we need to protect people who are older and who are sensitive. And I am a sensitive person. I believe it's on me to protect myself. So I appreciate you guys are juggling with a difficult thing. I'm going to email this data to you so that you can look at it yourself. And you'll notice down here on all of my charts, I have a link. You'll find the charts on the webpage that I have linked to. And these are, of course, Kansas State sites. So I would just encourage you to keep revisiting this issue because I think freedom is called for in this. We wouldn't be restricted with the flu. Why are we restricted with COVID-19? Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you. You got to take out your screen, Mr. Taylor.
I will do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anybody else like to speak?
I would like the chair to recognize, this is Eric Klingley. I would like the chair to recognize me, please.
I don't see you on the, I'm sorry, I don't see you on the screen.
I'm, I'm, I'm calling in, I have my, I'm not visually, I don't have a video on my computer.
Okay. You have three minutes, Mr. Klingley.
May I share my screen as well?
If you're on the computer, how do you square the screen?
I'm on a computer.
Why can't I see your face?
I don't have a, I do not have a camera. Let me know when you see my screen.
There.
Excellent. So when you, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear it? Great.
All right, great. So when Spencer Taylor was talking about the 500, I think it was 589 total Kansas deaths, the CDC published this information on September the 12th, that, that only 6% of the COVID deaths in the US were directly caused by COVID. And the reason why that's important to discuss is for the past 20 years, the CDC has been counting the flu only if it is the number, only if it's the only cause for death. So to really compare apples to apples, you have to take the 6% of COVID deaths to compare it to the flu numbers. So that takes, that takes the numbers way down. You can see on this table that all the other comorbidities that would be listed above COVID on the death certificate, in a normal situation, like influenza and stroke and heart failure, you can go down the list and it's, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll send this to you after the meeting. So that, that's really the point I wanted to make was that we, we really need to be looking at the data in terms of apples to apples, if we want to compare it to how we respond to the flu. And now that we're starting to understand COVID and what, what it does and does not, how it, you know, how it's being counted on death certificates, I would, I would ask that you kind of look at these, look at these tables and think about what we said today. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
I'll give you back the screen here in a second as soon as I get to. Shoot, sorry about that. Oh, man. I can't get.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, moving right along. Reading of the minutes, has anybody had a chance to review the minutes?
I have. I see no corrections.
Okay. Said a motion to accept.
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes as written.
Wait a second. It's been seconded by Commissioner Paul. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner comments and committee reports.
I was unable to attend my ECAP meeting last week because I still didn't have any internet. But I did get that fixed, so I have it now. And I have a NEK area agency on aging meeting on the 1st of October. That's all I have.
Bill, you have anything?
Yes, I had a doc correctional and we went over the budget. And she plugged in a 3% raise for the employees. That was about the only thing.
Okay, I don't have anything, so moving along, new business. I want to start the new business with something that isn't, I'm adding to the agenda. We need to, to approve assurances to the state of Kansas for, that if we get the, if we're awarded the bid for the cleanup of the courthouse, that we will follow through with the, the project. Pat Henderson and I had a conversation. He's reviewed the documents. He's fine with them. So the chairman entertained a motion to allow the chairman to sign these documents.
I'll make that motion.
Been moved by Commissioner Knoll, seconded by Commissioner Paul. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Wes Lenter.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. How are you doing?
Good.
We have two bid openings today. One is a bid opening for generator, both at this facility, the EMS Emergency Management Facility, and one at the Health Department. Kaylee has those bids, so she is going to open them for us today in the commission room. And then she will send them to me so I can review them. Our second bid opening is for the expansion project out here at the EMS facility for our EOC slash training room. So then after we do the generator bid opening, we'll do the expansion bid opening also.
Wes, as, as listed on the agenda, is three different bid openings. Is that right? Or the bids for the generator separate or?
Well, sorry, there's, it should be technically three because it's one bid for generator. Facility one bid for the generator at the Health Department and then the EOC. So yes, it's three different bid openings. I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, I wanted, you know, as we start writing things down, that I kind of know what, what we're all including in each one.
Correct. So Kayla, go ahead.
Wes, why don't you take just a moment and explain that this is from the Sparks Grants Program? And that it's from the, that the reason we're buying a generator in refrigeration? You might just take a moment and explain it.
Correct. We're using the Sparks money that was handed down from the federal government to the state and then the state to the county. We submitted it in to upgrade the Health Department and our EOC to be able to respond to the COVID pandemic better and to reverse cost that the county and the cities incurred during the COVID response, which is still ongoing. We got approval from the state to do so with the Sparks money. About three weeks ago, I don't remember the exact date that we received the approval. So then we put out to bid the projects that had to be put out to bid. So the generator packages and the EOC expansion are the ones that were over the $10,000 mark, which is what we would have to bid out. So two weeks ago, we put on our county website that we'd be accepting for these bids on, on today. And today is our bid opening process.
Okay, thank you, Wes. So you want to start opening the bids?
Yes, please. Kaylee, will you start with the Health Department generator, please? Hopefully they're marked, Health Department.
It is. I had to look for the correct envelope. Gerber Electric. 17 kilowatt generator transfer switch. To furnish a cooler. Do you want all the data on here or just the amounts, Wes?
Amount, because I would prefer you to send those to me so I can review them real fast.
I planned on that too. The amount for this one is $9,504.80. So numbers broke down 9504.80. Understood my words. I think that's it for that one.
Oh, that's it for the Health Department? Okay.
Yeah, I only have three bids total.
Oh, okay. Well, then let's to the other generator. Well.
This is the generator for emergency management is what it says. Making sure there's nothing else in there. And then this one's from Gerber Electric as well.
Okay.
This one will be $30,483.50. So those numbers broke down as 30483.50.
Okay. And there's no other generator bids for this office? Just that one?
Just, yeah, just those.
Okay. Then if we could proceed to the EOC expansion.
And I believe we've only got the one bid for that as well.
Okay.
Sorry.
Not your fault.
Um, yeah, new addition to the operation. I just want to make sure that's what this was. Carney Construction. The new addition for the Emergency Operations Center, the grand total is $87,200 even. So 87200.00.
Okay. So at this time, can the commission accept those bids so she can send them to me? And then we can, after discussion of whatever else you have on your agenda today, can take action on them?
Okay. I don't think they need to take any action on it. I think they just send them to you and next week you would come back with a recommendation, make sure they meet specs, et cetera.
Can I review the EOC expansion one during the meeting? And we can wait on the other two, but at least review to make sure it meets specs. That way we can get him started.
Yeah, if you're comfortable doing that, sure.
I fear that we're going to not give them enough time to get the job completed by December 30th.
So Wes, we'll bring it up right after the old business.
Okay.
Okay, so to give you a chance to review it. Is that enough time? That's probably like 10 minutes, but you know the specs pretty well. I don't.
I do know the specs pretty well, yes.
Were there, were there pre-bid estimates done on these projects?
Yes. So prior to this, I had to get quotes from different companies to be in the ballpark before we presented them to, to the state. Yes.
Are, are they close?
They, all three are very, very close to what the quotes were that were submitted to the, to the state.
Okay.
Okay.
Wes, sorry, Chairman. Wes, I have sent the EOC one to you currently. I'm working on sending the other two to you now.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Wes, I'd like to be around for this. We have a, we had a discussion, an in-person meeting. We've been meeting on Zoom since I think, who knows, for, seemed like we'd ever been in any other way. But since, since March, what a discussion of when it would be safe to move back into in-person meetings. Eric, you want to lead the discussion?
Yeah, I even noticed last night, I watched the city commission meeting. They were meeting in, in person at the city, the normal city hall. Most of the committees that I've been on are starting to either meet totally that way or, or have a combination or choice of. I think it's kind of important that we try to get back to a semblance of openness and, and and I think it's important that we show that our employees that we are there and doing the same things that we are expecting of them. So I, I think that we need some kind of plan drawn up or we need to have some kind of expectation of when we will get back to in-person meetings. What that for sure will look like, I mean, I don't know if it'll be a combination. I think the employees want to be able to use Zoom to access the commission. But the public, I know there's a lot of people that are, that like electronic, electronic meetings even less than I do and are more reluctant to meet this way. So I didn't know what that was going to entail to get, get to that point.
I'm trying to, it just, I can't disagree with anything you said. So the thing is, our commission room is very small. And we couldn't allow many people in it. And I think for safety, and the thing is, what you're saying is let's come to the commission room, meet in person, to have a Zoom meeting with everybody else, including the public. Because there's not enough room based upon the current standards for people to be in that room. I wish we'd come up with a facility that we could do that. And I do use the city commission as the example, but they have, they have a pretty good sized room. And, and I don't know if the public is coming in there or not.
There is public presence.
But it's a pretty good sized room. I wish we had a room that size. And that being said, do we, can we come up with a plan for the courtroom or a room off premises? I think it's going to take some time to think that through. I'm not crazy about going to an in-person meeting to have a Zoom meeting with everybody.
Well, the public could come in just through the door. We could have the podium set up at the doors for if they needed to address the commission, they could address, address us there. With the amount of people I've seen in the city commission meeting, I think we would be about on par, square foot per person is what, what they had. Of course, they have a lot more staff present, more commissioners, and more attendees generally. Of course, you can't regulate or you don't know from week to week how many people would be attending the meeting in person, the, from the public, but.
So what are your thoughts, Bill?
Well, this week, as well as last week, we've had several people that's viewing this Zoom meeting. We had two gentlemen speak up and talk. I don't think the public will come to our meetings, but I'll do whatever. I'm, I'm fine with Zoom and I'm fine with meeting in person. But like Chairman said, it's kind of ridiculous to come to the commission room and then have a Zoom meeting with our employees. So we're basically doing it for the public, which I don't think will have a whole lot of people show up. Maybe I'm wrong. But I'll go with whatever you want to go with.
So Wes, do you have a, do you have a point of view?
So um, at this time, I mean, we could absolutely set it up to where you guys could meet in person. It is a little silly to show up in person to have a Zoom meeting, but, but it can be done. We, if and when we do it, we are going to follow the, set an example and follow the rules set down by the state. I feel that we should as leaders. So therefore, we would want to make sure there was six foot social distancing between the three commissioners, Pat and Michelle or whoever's Michelle's place. So it would take the three commissioners, the full bench along the north end of the room. Then you could set Mr. Henderson where the presenters usually sit. And then you could set Michelle or her clerk representative back in the corner. You would not be able to allow more than one or two other people to be in that room because of six foot social distancing. So the sitting at the door with the podium sounds okay, but we would still have to make sure and be able to get them microphoned. So whoever's watching the Zoom meeting or watching the recording that we post on social media, would be able to hear what they were asking. So it is not impossible to make that happen. Or we would have to find a room elsewhere that we could set up the iPad that the public usually comes and presents to if they don't have access to technology. So there is a lot of moving parts to making this all work. I had planned already to have a plan in place for the commission. I have not been able to have time to do so yet. We can work on that. My fear right now is, yes, our numbers are going down. And some people feel that this isn't a real pandemic. But um, yes, I see our numbers are going down currently, but I'm really fearful what we're going to see here in a month or two, once the flu starts back up along with COVID. So we may be able to get you back into in-person meetings as long as our numbers continue to drop. But we may end up being back in our same situation here to where you're going to meet remotely here in the fall. So however, the commission would like to proceed forward, we will do. Just need to tell me what you want and we'll make it happen.
Eric?
I would like to meet in person. I think it's pretty obvious enough. But this is also the first time that we've talked about this and had a discussion for the public's consumption. So maybe this will drum up some public response, whether they agree with it or think that they would like in public, in-person meetings versus Zoom. So.
Bill?
We still, we still have a lot of viewers on Zoom. Let's have them say what's on their mind right now. How they would like it to be.
Well, I can speak if, but I also don't have a camera. My name's Patricia Elder. I'm a friend of Atchison since 1983. And I have a son at the college. And so that's why I'm on, because of what's happened over the last few weeks. I have an interest in the college. I love so many of the businesses in Atchison, the Sunflower, Jerry's again. There's just so many that we take people to. When they come to Kansas City, we take people to Atchison for several reasons. So that's why I'm on the Zoom call, just to hear what your thoughts are and what your plans are. That might affect my child, who is a student, and might affect some of the businesses in Atchison.
Right now, we're discussing having a meeting in person with the County Commission. So it has really little effect on the community. But I like your interest because there seems to be a lot of more interest in health in our community than has ever been before. So thank you very much for your comments.
You are very welcome. And I should also mention, I'm on the board at Kansas State University. And we're dealing with high numbers there. I mean, we made USA Today the top 25 hotspots for colleges. So you know, that's not a claim to fame right now. But because of what we are living and seeing, and we know the students are not reporting the way they used to, because now they know of the negative ramifications, it did pique my interest. Like, why is Atchison wanting to do this to the kids? Because it's not being handled that way at K-State. Riley County is not dictating what the state or what the college will do at this time. But it has gotten pretty bad there. I think we've been at 26. I think we've been at 26%, and it seems to be going higher. So I do take an interest, but I truly, what I say today is, as a friend of Atchison. So I've been going there since you could smell the yeast, and that was a long time ago. And I hope the city, I hope your town sustains and makes it through all of this.
The monks used to say, the smell, the smell is the smell of money and economic development. And I think that's probably still true. So that most Atchisonians don't even notice the smell, but we know it's the smell of money. So that's important.
Yes.
Anyway, I think, of course, I know Wes Lander is the one who has to set this up. He's really committed to Spark grants and all kinds of emergency management things. So he has had the time to come up with a plan, either another location or, and I like to give him some time to think this through. Is the ventilation in that room acceptable? Wesley, do you know?
There currently is no ventilation in that room to circulate the air. I believe the HVAC unit has not been repaired yet. So Kaylee, am I right? Is there still those black tubes sticking out of the wall? Or has it been fixed?
No, there are still tubes hanging out the wall.
So currently, it's not been repaired to where you'd be able to hold meetings, except for that window unit that there is there. So it's just going to recirculate the same air through that space.
So also, Wes is the size of the room is, I don't even know how big the room is, but it's small.
Not very large. I don't know the dimensions off the top of my head, though.
So people use that meeting room all the time?
Yeah, we use it for, the appraisals office uses it for tax hearings. Every department uses it for meetings, safety committee, health, all of those different meetings. So yeah, it's used, training happens over there. So yeah, it's it's used quite a bit. I don't think it has used been used a lot lately because of COVID and having to clean in between everyone. But normally, it's used quite a bit.
So it is mitigated between every use?
It should be, and I'm pretty sure, yes, that it is.
Okay, good. So we take it from here.
Is there any timeline on the the ventilation and the air conditioning unit that's going in?
I would have to talk to Mr. Bowen to find that out to see. Man, I haven't talked to him in the last couple of weeks, so I don't know. But I can get with him and find out when he expects it to be completed, and then that would help us move forward. And I can look at alternate sites, but I have to be able to do some sort of camera and sound system at the alternate site to make it to where we can record the meeting and we can put it on social media, and you can do Zoom, because a lot of people would like you to continue to put all your meetings on Zoom so they can attend them from wherever they're at. Which you can see in one of the comments that that we had on the meeting today.
Have you had the comment?
Down at the bottom, where it says chat, if you click on that. Now, on the iPad, it might not be on the bottom. It might be on the very top.
Is this chat content?
No, it says chat.
Oh, wait a minute. More chat. All right. Thank you.
You can see that.
I got to tell you, and I don't know if the other commissioners would agree with me, but you know, we whipped through the budget this year. We did so many things so much more efficiently, the meeting in in public. And I don't know if you could continue to do that, but it is a public meeting. Zoom's a public platform, but we really, I think, were much more efficient through this period of time than I thought we were the last couple of years. So I mean, I know the commissioners commented, are we really done with the budget? So it's a strange world we live in today. It's changing every day.
So I would like to see, personally, if you guys meet in person, I would still like to see that that we provide an alternate site like we currently are for citizens to come in and talk to the commission via the that we've been doing. I don't know how you feel about that, but that room and not very large unless we're going to move out to a bigger conference room, like out at the conference center, or maybe down at USD 409's board office, something like that, large enough to adequately adequately space people.
So Eric, why would you like to discuss this again? We got to give Wes some time. He's pretty busy.
Right. I think, well, one thing I wasn't aware of is the ventilation. I think that needs to be addressed first and foremost before anything else can happen. But you know, we haven't, we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, and nothing was ever, you know, decided, nothing was ever talked about again. So I still, I think it stifles debate, you know, on on not so much debate, but just discussion on a variety of topics when we are in person. And I think that especially in our work session in the mornings, things will come up, the more we have in-person talks, I think there's a lot more county business that gets addressed.
And I want to tell you that I reached out to some people in our employee ranks, not all 225 or 230, but I think they like, a lot of people would like to see us come into the building. So it's, Eric, you're not alone in this discussion. I just think it's a, there's a lot of complications to to overcome. And I think we had to give Wes some time to figure that out, but I don't think it's, I mean, what he has at his plate, I think we've got to be mindful of.
And and I'm not wanting to stop the Zoom worship, and if if we've got the numbers and the people that want to access it, I think it's fine to continue that. But I still think that there's a certain demographic that is not going to, they're not going to use Zoom.
No, no question about it, Eric.
So give me a week to back come back with a plan. We'll have a discussion next week, and then hopefully the week following, we can put that plan into place.
Okay, I just want to be, Wes, I just want to be realistic. You have to do these grant things this week. You have, should we do it the first week of October? Should we give you two weeks? I know you got to, I know you're bouncing all kinds of balls.
If it's not as acceptable with the commission, yes, that would be easier.
That's acceptable.
That's acceptable. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, this is a discussion, you know, I it wasn't an insistence.
Okay.
I think we had a good discussion, Eric. Thank you for bringing it up. Only unfinished business before the board. We had some discussion about Heartland Works, which is a nonprofit, non-government organization that promotes workforce development, and they've asked if one of us, if somebody in the county would participate. We haven't participated, I don't, as far as I could tell, ever. That doesn't mean we don't support workforce. And I will, and I know that Dave Rindum at MGP has been on that board for like 20 years, and someone from MGP is continuing. I don't know if the city has anybody on the board, but I don't think so. But my recommendation is that we opt out, because we don't, I don't think we have the manpower to handle that right now, the commitment. But I'd like to hear the commissioners' thoughts process on it.
I think if we have someone in the community that's part of the board and tuned into it, I, have you had any discussion with, you say, Mr. Rindum? Did I hear that right?
No, I just said, Dave Rindum was the board member for over 20 years, and someone at MGP has taken his place. I don't know what Dave's, I think Dave may have retired, or he's part-time or whatever. I've not had a conversation with him.
Okay, well, I mean, if we've got someone in the community that's accessing this, I think if they would think it was imperative that we have a member from the commission or community else be on, I think that they would have let us know. So I would go along with your recommendation to opt out.
So the chair would entertain a motion to to opt out of this, this program. Move by Eric.
I'll make the motion.
Move by Commissioner Paul Noel, seconded by Commissioner Paul. Paul, I get that, no, Paul, mixed up. All in favor, circle five by saying aye.
Aye.
Class is three to zero. Okay, moving right along. I'm going to go county counselor updates, and then we'll go to Wes, okay? Pat, you got any updates today?
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, this morning, you may have noticed that I wasn't on your your call. We had a care and treatment case that had a little bit more of a time crunch associated with it than usual for a couple of reasons. But anyway, that's where I was and what I was, what I was working on this morning. So I apologize for that. Also, I wanted to let you know, I did talk with Joe Bowen in some detail about the the application that he's working on for the tuck pointing, and that's a, just a mammoth amount of paper that needs to be generated. And he asked me a challenging question about even getting the the deed showing that the county owns the courthouse, which we can do. I just don't happen to have a copy of it. But there is a lot of work being done there, so which was very positive. And then finally, I've had a couple of discussions with NEKES. They are out regarding nuisance reports and nuisance violations, and they are out this week, supposed to be surveying the properties and getting reports, getting reports ready so that those can be filed. And I think it's probably time to do that. And then finally, the the tax sale. We sent out in the last week probably an additional 20 summonses that trying to get service, like second addresses that we have. And so that's, that's kind of moving along, and we're getting the number that we're still looking for kind of dwindled down. So probably in a couple of weeks, I should have a really good idea of what the timeline will be for finishing it up.
You know, one of the challenges will be, are we going to have the tax sale in person, or will it be done through a bidding process online? So.
Yeah, it could be a combination of both. We've, I've, we've thought about it a little bit. I've talked with the sheriff a little bit about it, but that's as far as it's gone. But I, I think having a meeting like this wouldn't be a bad idea for for bids.
Well, when I'm out in public, it's unbelievable. Everybody wants to talk about the tax sale. So I know some people want to buy property to invest in, and and we need to collect our taxes. So it's interesting to see how many people are interested in that one particular dynamic of all the things we do in the county. Anything else, Pat?
No, that's all I have.
Quickly, on the NEKES, I had a call about one of those properties that was already on the nuisance list, but it was to do with the tall weeds. Now, is mowing something that and and taking care of tall weeds, is that something that's a nuisance considered in our county?
Well, it isn't directly addressed as you know what, I better look at the resolution before I say that.
You can just email me your answer on that. But this was more, wasn't so much the mess, it was the the tall weeds. And I said, well, it's, if they're not noxious weeds, I don't believe, from what I've read, that just tall weeds are considered a nuisance, but that have to come from somebody more in tune with that than me.
Well, I think that that is actually exactly what I was remembering, but I'm I'm pulling up resolution, the resolution right now. Come on, computer. Yeah, that's exactly right, unless it's going to be of such an extent as to constitute a hazard or fire, health, or safety. Yeah. But you're exactly right, Commissioner Noel.
Thank you.
Okay, Pat, today we had a conversation about our meeting structure, and specifically, we're talking about allowing people three minutes to speak, and we didn't know what our actual meeting structure is. It's it's kind of in concert with what we've seen Johnson County and and City of Atchison do. We want everybody to speak, we want to give them an opportunity. Three minutes should be adequate. Sometimes it may have to go longer, but I just didn't know, we must have a beating structure resolution. Can we discuss that next week, maybe?
We, yeah, we certainly can. It's it's maybe more of a complex subject than you might think, because there have been some instances with with groups where there there will be literally dozens of people that will show up to sort of filibuster a meeting by talking for whatever the allowable amount is. And we have never seen anything close to that here. But I suppose it's something that needs to be planned for kind of on a just-in-case basis. You know, most of the time, I think you're asking for for more input from the public and are kind of wanting more than what you usually get. So so there's that side to the issue, too. So yeah, we should have a discussion about it next week.
Yeah, there's definitely, we want to hear, we want everybody to be heard. You know, I know Johnson County requires people to sign up in advance of the meeting. I don't want to do that, you know, and they put a time limit on the amount of individual comments and the total comments. But I, we're a small town, so we want everybody to have a chance to speak. But I want to be fair and mindful of the time. This is a business meeting, and we are trying to accomplish things during the meeting. And we had a couple of guys on the day. They said similar things. It's information that I think I was interested in hearing, and I think other commissioners would agree it was worth hearing. So I don't, I just want to make sure we're not restricting to being too restrictive.
Pat, are you going to be here next week?
Oh, yes, I originally was not going to, but I got that rescheduled. So yes, I will be.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Eric, for reminding me he was going to be gone. So, okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, anything else, Pat?
I actually, in the morning, I may be late. I have a budget here, Drainage District budget hearing at nine. It shouldn't take long, but you know how that goes. So I may be a little late for the morning, but I should be here.
Okay, so Wes, do you want to come on and talk about the bid from Carney Construction?
Yeah, so I reviewed the bid document from Carney Construction. They did have one alternate as to the trench footer that we had put in the drawing. I talked with Roger previously about this, because they had notified me that they had an alternate option that they thought was better and would save the county money, which myself and Roger agreed to. So the only alternative was that. So I would propose the commission accept the bid for $87,200 for the EOC expansion.
Well, I have a motion.
What all does that entail? How big of expansion is it? Can you just give a few brief overlay of what you're doing?
Yes, I sure can. The plan's right here. So basically, we're a little over doubling the size of our current EOC and training room. You all three have been in enough space to accommodate about eight people socially distanced. So when we're trying to cram 20 and 30 people in there for a training twice a month, we needed to make it bigger. We also have very little storage. We did a six by 12 storage closet into the corner of it. This is also replacing a 25-year-old replacing a 25-year-old HVAC unit that currently heat and cools one-third of the building out here. That unit is an, is an industrial unit that has had major problems in the last three years. And we've each year get to spend a large sum of money on it to keep it running. And so this is also replacing the HVAC unit for a third of the building plus the expansion. And we're making it ADA compliant. So the current room is not ADA compliant, which our EOC by state statute has to be ADA compliant. So there will be a ramp on the east side of the building that is ADA compliant to the, to the actual EOC itself. And the rest of it is lighting, sheetrock, electrical outlets, and networking, concrete floor, making the space a little bigger. As the gist of, of that contract. They are going to meet the roof line. They are going to match the existing color of the, of the current building. And they do have to relocate some gas lines and some water lines under where the building will expand to. But that is the gist of the project.
And Eric, is the funding of this from the CARES Act?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the bid from Carney Construction.
It's been moved by Commissioner Noel. Do I have a second? Got a second from Commissioner Paul. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero.
I have also had a taste review, the two quotes for the generators, and they meet specs 100%. So we can wait to approve those next week, or you can approve them today, whichever you guys prefer.
Well, I think that the sooner you get started on that project, the better off we are. I mean, they're talking about the vaccine being available, maybe before elections. So we probably ought to get our, so, yeah, I, I agree. So touch your hands. So depends on who you listen to. So let's, let's go ahead and bring those up, Wes.
Okay, so the Health Department was a bid from Gerber Electric for $9,504.80. And that consists of a 17K generator, a Kohler, and a 200-amp automatic transfer switch. That also will include, they have to, it's a natural gas generator. So they will also provide the piping from the, from the natural gas to the generator. And that will be played on the southeast side of the Health Department. They will have to remove some of the fencing on the southeast corner to accommodate it. But that's where the, the service comes into the building, the electrical service and the gas line. So it worked out pretty well for us that they were on opposite sides of the building.
So on the south, on the alley side, are they mounting this up off of the ground? Or is this going to?
It'll, it'll be mounted, actually on the slab of concrete to the right. Which you probably normally can't see, because they have a privacy fence there. So they'll have to remove part of the privacy fencing to accommodate it. And then the trash can, we're already sitting there, so they'll have to move those down. But it, southeast corner of the building, and you in the southwest corner of the building from the alley.
Okay. So you're going to be security fence put around us with the alley being right there, that close, be awfully easy for someone to come take it.
Well, we, we could do that, but it is a locked, it's a locked cabinet that's bolted to the ground. So it's both bolted to the ground. And then there's a locked lid that's on it. So you have to have a special key to be able to get into it. So I don't feel that you would need to put a fence around it, but we could absolutely check into that.
The special key, I have a Kohler, and all you need is a pair of pliers. Took half the pliers in there and twisted, you unlock it.
Thank you for saying that on here. We will address that.
Do I, do I have a motion to approve the generator for the Health Department? It's moved by Commissioner Noel. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Paul. Any further discussion? Hearing none, you're ready to vote? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Okay, Wes, moving right along.
Sorry, I'm still laughing at his comment. The third.
I'm just telling you like it is.
And I completely do. The third generator is also from Gerber Electric. It was for a 60KW generator, 110, 120 volt. The concrete pad for it to be mounted on along with the wiring to the transfer switch. We already have a transfer switch out here in automatic. So they're just, what we're doing is we've outgrown the current generator that we have here. So we are going to replace it with this newer one and then move the current generator that we have out to the station two, to where it's automatically generated instead of a, you know, a pull-out 6,500-on-wheel generator. And that one was for $30,483.50.
Are they going to install that in that bid to the other station or not?
No, I could not put that as part of the Sparks grant money to install it out there at the other facility. But it'll be a very, I really have, it'll be below my spending threshold to, to set it up out there.
Why is this one, is it that? I mean, that's a pretty large generator, I take it?
Yeah, it's a 60KW. Instead of what we originally put in, out here was a 20KW. And we are currently overloading that generator, so it can't even start. And then we're going to add on to this facility and add more of electrical demand. And the new HVAC, AC, HVAC unit on top of that requires a bit, a larger unit. So then the unit that we'd have, that we currently have, will work out the station two, because we've already sized it to that facility. And it's a little larger than what we need, but leaves you room for expansion.
Could that be accessed with your, with the old noxious weed building where you've got your backup facilities there? Can that be accessed and, and also use it there?
Yeah, those two buildings are actually attached for the electrical service. So when that generator kicks in, it'll, it'll power both of those buildings. Which is great, because that is where all my backup communications, my backup sire and control, everything is still in that building. Yep.
Okay, that makes it just that much more usable, user-friendly.
So the chair would entertain a motion to approve Gerber Electric project.
I'll make the motion.
By Commissioner Noel. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Paul. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
Merry Christmas, Sheriff Mr. Lander.
We have a, okay, so we have a a public comment section for something that's for today. Anybody like to speak? Hearing none. The commissioner would, the chairman would entertain a motion to adjourn at 1:59 PM.
Also move.
So move by Commissioner Noel, seconded by Commissioner Paul. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Passes three to zero.
See you next week.